The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in ten seconds.
Welcome to all of you here tonight that are in our Commissioners Auditorium for our meeting and to those of you who are home watching on TV. I'll call this meeting to order and we'll have our road call if you'll please. We're all here and we will now have our invocation by Melvin McGlaughorn and our pledge to the flag by Ann Huggins if you'll please stand.
Shall we pray? Eternal God, we come first of all to tell you thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. As you do God, if you come into this meeting and help us to make the decision that would be for the benefit of the citizens of Pitt County, these and all blessed and we ask in thy holy name, amen.
Amen. From the face to flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Do you want to note the movements before we approve?
We actually have two changes to the agenda. One, we wanted to move presentations up of our Eagle Scouts before the public hearings if the board would allow, and also we would like to add a closed session for attorney-client privilege tonight.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, as amended so. If we'll vote, please. Melvin, yours didn't go through. Thank you. Okay, then. Our first order will be the recognition of the scouts. If, do we, how many do we have?
Chairman, let me proceed.
Yes, please, and if you called the one.
Okay. Tonight, we have the honor and distinction of honoring two young men in Pitt County who are part of the Boy Scouts of America for their achievement in earning the Eagle Award, and we would like to first call up Ryan Edward Baxter. And if you bring any family members, your scout master, anybody here that's supporting you, they're welcome to join you. Parents, siblings.
Neighbors.
Neighbors, friends, people you don't know, airbag can come up.
This is an important, and little sister, I assume.
So we have a certificate we are going to award. Give you a picture of it first. Says Certificate of Appreciation is awarded to Ryan Edward Baxter for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And maybe stop right there before I go on. I just want to say that in Pitt County, we always like to note that the number of young men who actually earned the Eagle Scout is about double the national average of percentage, and we're proud of the strong program, scout program we have here in Pitt County. So for his, for his project, he planned and constructed a picnic area for the Aiden Housing Authority community. And the certificate is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners today, the eighteenth day of November two thousand nineteen, and signed by our chairman, Beth B. Ward. Chair?
Thank you. And so many of these projects are things that benefit the county, all different types of neighborhoods and people in need or not in need, but something that benefits the county, and we really appreciate it. And we appreciate your parents, too, because we know they had to be there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, next, we have David Wyatt Moore. He'll come forward. And just to note on these projects, these projects take many, many hours to plan, and then the execution of the projects is usually done by obviously the, the Boy Scout as well as other scouts within the troop, family members, and anybody else who they get to help. So again, this certificate of appreciation is awarded to David Wyatt Moore for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he purchased and installed three large flag poles for the Red Oak Fire Department. Again, presented this eighteenth day of November two thousand nineteen by our chairman, Beth B. Ward.
Thank you, David, and congratulations. Congratulations, Mommy. Not for the Winnebago Fire Department? That it?
That's it.
Madam Chair, would I make a motion to approve the recognition of those scouts?
Okay, thank you. Let's vote, please, on the approval of those awards. Okay, our next order of business are public hearings. Mr. Rhodes, if you'll come forward, you have the first one.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have four planning-related public hearings for your attention tonight. The first one is about a year in the making after our adoption of the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. And you may recall, that was adopted last October. That was a joint effort, not only singularly of Pitt County, but we had the town of Winterville, the city of Greenville, and the town of Aiden also involved in that. So of course, what we'll be talking about tonight is specifically, specific to Pitt County because it deals with our zoning jurisdiction and planning jurisdiction. So with that, we have some proposed amendments that come straight from goals and objectives that were set out in our land use plan. So we're looking to achieve some of those through some of these amendments. And just so you know, we're looking to have these become effective if they're approved tonight on January the first of next year. Just a little bit of where we've been through this process. These draft amendments were provided to our planning board back in July, had a public hearing in August. We kind of hit pause for a couple of months. We were working on a particular fourth section of the amendments that you won't see tonight, and I'll talk with you a little bit about that in a while. But we hit pause for a couple of months, brought that back to the planning board, and they have given you a favorable recommendation on the package before you tonight. So first up, I mentioned we had four. You've got three before you tonight, and I'll mention the Rinston Historic District in a while. So the first item is Cluster Development Regulations. This is a completely voluntary process whereby with new subdivisions coming through our review process, the developer may want to take advantage of clustering and reducing lot sizes while leaving open space in certain areas of the, on that property. And it may be environmentally sensitive areas. It could be areas that are just nice-looking, they might want to maintain and not have any land to servants there. It does encourage open space, reduces stormwater runoff, and one of the major things that we saw in our portion of this particular land use planning effort was also preserving the agricultural character. So this kind of keeps that open space available. So just to give you a graphic or a schematic about this, this is what we're talking about. This is a particular parcel in our planning jurisdiction, and we've taken it and kind of clustered the number of lots that you might would have gotten spread out over the entire parcel and clustered those in certain areas where at the same times you would be protecting those areas that would be left as open space through either deed restrictions, homeowners associations, or possibly an easement going to the state of North Carolina or to some other agency that would remain as undeveloped area in perpetuity. And we've got a couple of different options as far as reducing lot sizes, and it all hinges on the amount of open space that comes along. So the range of reduction in lot sizes will range from ten, range from ten to thirty percent depending on the amount of open space that's kept. And you can just kind of see the road network here. Probably would be a lot more limited than what you see on the screen tonight, but that also helps reduce infrastructure costs, whether it's roadway, whether it's water lines or whatever that might be included in the development process. And typically, you're wanting to take advantage of some of the open spaces that you have there. So pedestrian trails are typically a part of these open space amenities. So that was number one. Number two, and probably one of the bigger items as part of your package tonight, is the creation of a highway overlay district. Now, this isn't brand-new to Pitt County. We already have a few roadways that are protected similarly as this is intended to with the new Southwest Bypass. US 264 East and West already have overlay districts as well as NC 11 North. And these regulations we're putting in place here pretty much mimic those. It does provide for enhanced landscaping, viewshed protection, development standards, and access controls, again, trying to limit driveway access in and around some of these access points towards the corridor. Landscape buffer yards are required, and these are for non-residential developments. And additional design and appearance standards are also required for non-residential development along the corridor. I would like to stop and mention, too, we're already getting plenty of calls at our office about outdoor advertising signs. And you may recall, some thirty years ago with the construction of 264 West, the board decided at that time not to allow any outdoor advertising signs along freeways. We've kept that intact over this thirty-year period, and we're putting that also in place here along the corridor. So within the county's jurisdiction, unless something changes, you will not see any outdoor advertising or billboards along that stretch of roadway. So here's the roadway, and again, about thirteen miles going in from the point just west of here where it will take off on the southern end of Martin Luther King Boulevard, heading southward toward Aiden. So about nine miles or close to ten miles, actually, roadway is within the county's jurisdiction. That's shown in yellow here. So heading out just north of Frog Level Road across US 13 and on down toward Aiden. And this is the area that will be protected. It's a thousand-foot linear feet on either side of the road right-of-way associated with the corridor, and that's the area that is under consideration for the overlay district. It contains about a hundred and eighty properties, I'm sorry, about two hundred and fifty properties, about a hundred and eighty landowners. So various sizes of lots and properties through there, those would be the ones that are subject to the regulations associated with the overlay. And then finally, the enhanced non-residential lighting standards. I will tell you, and I've spoken with Commissioner Nunley beforehand, one of our main champions about these regulations would be Dr. Bray with a Time for Science, which is the nice science facility we have down toward the southern end of this particular corridor. There are a lot of concerns with some of the science field trips they have there, especially at night, the night viewing with the telescopes and all. They were having problems with some of the light pollution in the area. What we're trying to do with these regulations, specific to non-residential development, is to ensure that any light that comes in with these new sites would be oriented downward, not upward. So these have, some of these regulations have some of those features associated with them. Also limits the height of the light source, and it should not be in close proximity to any residential property. There are some exemptions, of course, for any FAA-required lighting and some of the street lighting, too. The fourth item that we did not bring before you tonight deals with the Rinston Historic or Rural Historic District. I will tell you, Madam Chair, we tried hard. We've had several meetings, four meetings, with the Rinston Historic District property owners trying to come to some consensus. It really boiled down to the types of uses that would be allowed in that historic district and the lot sizes. We could not get an agreement on that. The planning board did not feel comfortable giving a favorable recommendation. They had a split vote. So at this point in time, we are not proceeding on with bringing that before you. If we have further discussion, if we can get a better consensus at some point, that may be coming back before you at some later date. So the three that are before you, we feel like they're consistent with the goals of the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, as well as, they're also reasonable and in the, in the public interest as well. Those are statements that are required for any amendments to our zoning ordinance. And as I've mentioned, the planning board did offer a favorable recommendation for all of these proposed amendments that we're bringing forward. So here are your two motions that are in your package, and again, we're recommending approval with an effective date of January the first. And with that, Madam Chair, we're ready for the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up?
There's nobody signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak.
Okay. We have none, so we can proceed on. Are there any questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. If we'll vote, please. Okay, passes. Thank you. And Mr. Eric Gooby, if you'll come forward, please.
We do have one rezoning request. We also have a conditional use permit request after this one. But for the rezoning request, it's from Stallings Mini Storage. The request is to rezone approximately four point seven eight acres. It's comprised of two separate parcels that are included in this request. One is owned by Eddie Stallings and Carrie J. Stallings, and the second is owned by William D. Robertson and Donna J. White. And the request is to rezone from rural residential to general commercial conditional district, and that's to expand the existing mini-storage warehouse that's located adjacent to these properties, which is Stallings Mini Storage. This is a site in question. You see, it's located off Beestoke Road. It's just to the east of NC 43 South, as you're heading south out of Greenville towards Chicot and towards Vanceboro, that area. Existing land uses, predominantly residential, it used to be a manufactured home park on the property, but you see also there, there are several other commercial and even industrial use that's located within close proximity. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan shows it as suburban residential, and that designation is intended to include residential land uses as well as limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. And that criteria typically includes frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location of major intersection, proximity to similar uses, as well as separation from non-compatible uses. That, that designation is distinguished by having a greater potential for development as well as, includes a broader range of land uses. The zoning in the area, you see, the property is currently zoned rural residential, and there are several general commercial zone properties, including the two next to it with the existing mini-storage as well as the contractor business. General Commercial is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have the utilities to support that type of development. And a conditional district rezoning allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions. In this case, the proposed use is a self-storage warehouse. So this is a site plan that was submitted along with the request. See the outline, this does include both parcels. There's some, they are proposing to asphalt the majority of the property. That'll be for the parking and for the access. It'll tie into the existing road, which is Pecan Ridge Drive. They're proposing eleven buildings with approximately sixty-two thousand square feet of storage area. There's a stormwater pond that'll be proposed for all that impervious surface that's proposed. There's also a forty-foot drainage easement and a fifty-foot repairium buffer along the south side of the property. And they're going to be maintaining the existing vegetation along that side to maintain those buffers. Staff does find the request is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It meets locational criteria for the suburban residential designation, and also find the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it's an expansion to an existing business, and it's located within a quarter mile of a major state highway. The planning board reviewed this request on October sixteenth, voted unanimously to recommend approval. So staff does have two motions. The first would be to adopt the consistency statement that's in your packet, and motion two would be to approve the request by Stallings Mini Storage to rezone from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. With that, Madam Chair, we'd like to open the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Brian Fagundis with our consulting group.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. I'm Brian Fagundis, here tonight on behalf of Stallings Mini Storage. I don't necessarily have specifics to add to Mr. Gooby's presentation. As he noted, staff's opinion is that the request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The planning board heard this item at their October meeting. With that being said, if you guys have questions, I can help answer. Glad to try to do it.
Okay. No questions? But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
He was just talking about the storage space.
Right. No one else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing. And any questions from the board, or I'll entertain a motion?
I want to ask a question. There seem to, I'm concerned about affordable housing. Are there, I don't, we see a lot of changes coming up with planning, and there's a strong need for affordable housing. Will this prevent residents from purchasing affordable houses? Will this drive the price up, or what will it do towards that? I'm not a construction person, but I am concerned about affordable housing.
This, this request really doesn't, doesn't deal with housing. It's for a
Neither one of these planning things, because there was a lot of planning stuff in our packet this time.
The, that might be more of a question for the first item, dealing with the cluster zoning, but this is for a mini-storage zoning request.
And they already have some mini-storage in that area.
Right.
They're adding to it.
It's my district. I'm very familiar with it. I think it's totally suited for what the, what they're asking for.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I was maybe suggest that planning staff follow up with Commissioner Perkins-Williams about a affordable housing question after the meeting, unless you want to answer anything now. Have them answer it.
We'll follow with her afterwards.
Okay.
Give them a fresh fore.
Anything else? Okay, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Let's vote, please. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Eric, you're up again.
Yes, ma'am. As I mentioned, we have a conditional use permit request. It's by Thomas and Ann Taylor for a wedding event facility. And as boards aware of conditional use permits, we have to follow quasi-judicial procedures. So these procedures must adhere to the following guidelines. The purpose is to establish facts, not to gather opinions about the project. Witnesses have to be under oath. Testimony must be supported by evidence, and the board must maintain a detailed record of its hearing. No ex parte communication is, is allowed, and written findings of fact are required, and any reasons for disapproval must be provided in writing, and any decision may be appealed to Superior Court. So with that, we'd like to go ahead and swear in any witnesses tonight.
Okay. Do we have any witnesses on this? Okay. If you'll come forward, please. Our clerk will swear you in.
So as I mentioned, the request is by Thomas and Ann Taylors for a conditional use permit to operating a wedding and event facility on Spate Seed Farm Road. It's just south of its intersection with Cosin Road, parcel number six zero two nine five. It's located at thirty-seven seventy-nine Spate Seed Farm Road, and the property is approximately ten and a half acres. As part of the narrative that was submitted by the applicant, he stated that the proposed hours of operation would be Fridays from five PM to seven PM, as well as Saturdays from noon to ten PM. from noon to 10:00 p.m., and they're proposing to hold approximately 10 events per year with up to 150 guests. Zoning in the area is rural agricultural for the, the subject property itself, and to just to the west, to the east of it would be rural residential. The property is also within our Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan study area, so that designates it as being agricultural. And the existing land use shows that it's predominantly residential with agricultural land uses in the vicinity. As per Section 8 of the Pitt County zoning ordinance, wedding events facilities are required to provide a minimum lot size of two acres. They have to observe a 30-foot setback for any equipment, structures, and parking. There's a 100-foot use separation from occupied residential structures on adjacent properties. There should be no outside amplified sound after 10:00 p.m. The facility would have, should have a maximum floor area of 7,500 square feet, and also their requirements for screening, parking, and where signage can be located, or the size of signage. The site plan that was provided with the request, this would be the property in question. See the existing drive and existing residence, as well as a garden house that's located on the property. What's highlighted in yellow, there, there is, with the existing drive, DOT is requiring to make some improvements to the drive in terms of widening and paving. There's a significant amount of existing vegetation also on the property that they're going to be utilizing for the screening to satisfy those requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the proposed facility is going to be located behind the residence. It's approximately 1,600 square feet, so it's meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the, the size of the facility. Proposed parking area is going to be located in an area that's essentially a forest pasture currently. It's not required to be paved, but they will have to provide some type of parking stops to indicate where those spaces are for the, for the guests. And then those areas that aren't currently screened with the existing vegetation, they're going to provide additional vegetation along, along those areas. So there are several criteria the board has to consider and should deny the permit if it concludes that the development at its proposed location more probably than not will materially endanger the public health or safety. Staff feels like it's a, it's a wedding and event facility and doesn't propose any sort of public safety or health hazards. It will substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property. The facility's going to be screened and separated from adjoining properties. Also will have a limited number of events with, with hours of operation, so we don't feel like it'll injure those adjoining property values. If it will not be in harmony with the area in which it's to be located, the area is predominantly agricultural, limited residential uses, and so we feel like it'll be in harmony. And if it will be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by the Board of County Commissioners, and we feel like the site does conform with those plans. So we do have two motions. The first would be to acknowledge that the conditional use permit request is complete, and the second motion would be to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the standards of the zoning ordinance, as well as the following additional conditions. First, to obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT and comply with all the requirements for driveway access. That includes also appropriate access for any fire apparatus, as well as to comply with any applicable emergency management requirements. When they reviewed the site plan, they didn't have any information on the occupancy classification just yet, and so they couldn't make any specific code interpretations for that. So they want to, they want to hold off on that until then. So that condition would be that they would comply with those, those requirements. So with that, Madam Chair, we'd like to open the public hearing.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up?
Nope.
Okay. With, with that said, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll hear from you.
Okay. I'm Thomas Taylor. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I'll reopen the public hearing. I'm sorry. I thought that that was it, but you're fine. Go ahead.
Anyway, I'm Thomas Taylor with Will Oak Farm. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I think we got it. Thank you very much. Well presented. Okay? Yes, we, I will now close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. If we'll vote, please. Okay, that passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for all your presentations. And Hila Johnson, if you'll come forward, please. Road names for the Southwest Bypass Service Roads.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. So with DOT, they're finalizing the completion of the Southwest Bypass with Barn Hill Construction. And so with that, they have several service roads that we have to name. We've named all but five now, and so we got the remaining five to finish today, because they're opening it this week. And as each road nears completions, then we've already got suggested road names. We had a petition, and that's already been submitted. Of course, here's the bypass that they just talked about earlier, about the 12-mile. So to minimize the hearings, we've kind of bunched them together, the road names, and into one public hearing, and we've solicited and received different names for each one. We notified the property owners, and only the road names that weren't duplicating or that met the addressing ordinance were presented for consideration. And if they submitted more than one, we only use the first choice out of the three. And like I said, we notified everyone with a public hearing and emergency service providers for review and comments. So with that, I would like to go ahead and go through each one. The first one is Partnership Way. It's service road number one. That's right off of Stantonsburg Road. Service Road Two, this is off of Frog Level Road, and the only one suggestion we had at that point was Wyatt Brown Road. We're still in the same area right here. Number three, it was either Petrus Brown Road or Edwards Timber Road.
Now, will we have to vote on those?
Yes.
Choose one of those. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And there's some citizens there that may want to talk, that haven't signed up, that I've met here.
Okay.
So Eli, in this, in that case, you had two different groups submitting.
Two different groups. It's one or the other one. And that's the same thing for here. Number four, we had Nathan's Lane or William Thomas Turnage Road. So if it was either or, then it was two different groups. And the last one was number eight, down near Aiden, and it was Commerce Park Drive. And so after holding the public hearing, our recommendation was to name the newly constructed roads.
Okay, so, Madam Chairman, I'm not exactly sure how we should go about this.
So you can open your public hearing, take them road by road, and then after, do you have a recommendation? If not, after each one, you can vote to name that road.
Vote to name on the ones that have choices.
Yes.
Or, or the even one choice. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing?
So our first speaker signed up is Mary Turnage, if you'll come forward, and if our attorney will give our statement on public hearings.
Mary Turnage.
Which I guess we didn't do it on the others, but.
Pitt County welcomes.
I want to make one statement, is that some of the properties covered multiple areas, and so some of the property owners may have gotten confused a little bit as far as which road was theirs. And so Turnage Road, one of them thought that we were renaming Turnage Lane, but we were not renaming Turnage Lane at all. And so we clarified with that with some of the property owners here today.
Okay.
And I will keep your time, Madam Chair. Five minutes per speaker. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. And if each speaker will state your name and address when you begin your remarks, I'll keep your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary Turnage. My address is 2038 Turnage Lane. Okay, as Mr. Eli said, that there were several names that was presented, and I will, William Thomas Turnage is one of them. I really don't have any argument with that, so whatever is decided, I mean, if you say William Thomas Turnage, I would vote for that one. So, you know, it really doesn't make any difference.
So William Thom, Thomas Turnage Road is the name of the road now?
No. Turnage, we already, on the service road, one of the service roads already named Turnage Lane, but the ones that he's talking about, we're part of that one because we own a part, a strip of that land. So our name came up because of that, William Thomas Turnage.
Okay.
That is part of it. Anyway, I have my brothers and my cousin here that, that I guess they will say the same thing.
Okay.
If they will vote for that.
She is in favor of William Turn, William Thomas Turnage Road being named that for this service road, correct?
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Okay. And there is a road out there presently named Turnage Road?
That's already Turnage Lane. That's why I don't really.
Lane.
Yeah, I'm not arguing about it.
Oh, okay.
Will it be confusing?
So there'll be two?
It would be two.
Okay.
There's no conflict with emergency management on that, correct, Eli?
No, we had no comment on that, because it adds extra names to the word, and it makes it different.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Are we ready to vote?
On, not yet.
Is there anyone here from Nathan's Lane?
We, no, we, yeah, but we have, nobody, nobody else has signed up.
Unless there's somebody here.
We're going to call on this next person and see who they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Willie Baker, if you'll come forward, please.
Yes.
Board members. My name is Willie Baker Jr. I'm a pastor of the Greater Life Ministry here in Greenville, Lisa Pine Road. I grew up in this area on Frog Level Road. It's just I was three. Also brother to, to the Turnage. There's many people that had lived on these land during the years. I want to include spells, because at the end of this road, going back towards Aiden, it was cut off at the spell land. So you can't get there unless you are farmer. I'd like to include that it'd be named Spell Baker Road, if no objection from the board members.
Which one is he talking about?
Which one is this in reference to?
Is that the service road number four?
Number four. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two.
Two or three.
We have three offered, but only two have been spoken of out of the three. Okay?
We got Baker-Turnage.
So.
You guys would need to vote on one of those three.
Right.
We can't combine, we can't combine them to be Baker-Turnage?
Be a long name.
Yes, you can make that recommendation. Yes, ma'am.
You had meetings to come up with a consensus. At that meeting, did you have the spell Baker presented? Was that in?
That was not submitted as a petition when I sent out the letters. And then, so when I sent this last letter out to notify the public hearing, that's when Mr. Baker come up to speak before the board.
It was not submitted.
Correct.
Okay.
That's a new name.
Okay, Dave. So, yes.
I like the suggestion with the, the speaker, Ms. Turnage that spoke. What was her name? What is her?
Mary Turnage.
Yeah, what is her?
Ms. Turnage, would you come forward and?
What does she think of this?
And answer the question, if you don't mind, from Commissioner Huggins.
Because they're wondering. Calling me, because I signed.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Do you have?
Yeah, they can.
Do you have a problem with Baker, with spell of Baker?
No, I mean, do you, can he come up, part of the family, one of them? Can he come up?
Yes, sir.
No, I have no problem with that.
Can you give us your name, sir?
Give us your name.
Tyrone Turnage, Pastor Tyrone Turnage, 2036 Turnage Lane. So for me, people knowing me, y'all forgive me. But I'm wondering, there's three roads there, service roads, in that one area. Now, which one are we talking about?
We're talking about number four, which is when you cross the bypasses on the south side.
On the south side. I think my cousin, Mr. Baker, may be talking about the other side, because that particular road, service road runs up into their property. Turnage Road would be, after you go under the overpass, the Southwest Bypass, Turnage Road would be to the right.
This is right up there.
So it would be three.
Like I said, there's three adjacent roads there, runs into three different properties.
Well, can you add property ownership? I thought that's what we had.
Is this road on the left? Left of, of the bypass, this one, this shore right here?
It's on the south side of the bypass.
So it'd be on the southeast side of the intersection of Frog Level and the bypass.
But are there any, any more roads that we have not determined a name for? Because?
There's two more there.
The one north of there, we had Petrus Brown and Edwards Timber Road.
This one, that's the one on the right side.
On the north side.
Okay, so that's.
This is the one right here. This is number what, two?
Number three.
Number three. That is the one that runs back toward, runs south. With north and south. It's on the other side of the bypass. So that's the one I thought that my cousin was talking about.
So that's a different one, I think.
Yes, there's three different roads there.
Right. So if I understand correctly, Service Road Four is the William Thomas Turnage Road or Nathan's Lane? Is that correct, the one we're talking about now?
Correct. And then Mr. Baker wanted to name it Baker Spell.
Speaker, Spell Baker.
But didn't he just say that he thought he was talking about the road number three?
Mr. Baker is saying no, that it applies to number four, is what he's saying.
If you look at the map.
Can you come to the microphone, Mr. Baker?
Come to the podium, if you don't mind.
Look at the map. Frog Level, 213. It's to the right, and you come down to Service Road number four. And when you go on the overpass, you have Turnage Lane, which is to your right, to your left.
See, the first road, after you come under the overpass to the right, is number four. Okay, back over, before you go under the overpass, you all is back this way.
Right here.
Yeah, right here, yeah. On this side.
That's the one we knew.
This one we talked about. At the end of Service Road number four is where our property is, and the spell property is.
Okay. Well, I would, okay, I would have no problem with Turnage Baker.
Yeah.
I would have no problem.
Okay, is that a proposal for road number four to be Turnage Baker? Is that satisfactory with both of you?
That's great.
Turnage Baker?
Yes.
Okay. And that's number four. Okay?
It's going to be good for them, so.
And do we need to vote on this real quick?
You were going to do it at the end, I believe.
So move.
We don't want to vote on one at a time.
Well, you might want to ask if there's any other people come forward on.
We did. We already said that one time.
No one's, for Nathan's Lane is here.
Okay, we have to hear from number three, because we have to. Should we go on and vote on this one after?
If you'll close your public hearing.
Yes, and then vote on just this one now.
Certainly.
Okay, and it's Turnage Baker is what they said would be satisfactory. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing on Service Road Four, and I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
I move that we name it Turnage, Baker-Turnage, Turnage Baker.
Turnage Baker was what they said.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, Turnage Baker it is. Okay, thank you. Next.
The other, only other one that had a choice between the two was number three, and that was Petrus Brown Road or Edwards Timber Road, and that was on the north side of Frog Level Road.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on that. Service Road number three?
Okay.
Okay, no one signed up? So we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion for one of these two, and the first one, I think, was the one that they.
Madam Chairman, can we also kind of combine them?
If you want to make that motion, we'll be fine.
Okay. I move that we name it Brown Edwards Timber Road.
Okay, this is a motion to name it Brown Edwards Timber Road?
Brown Timber.
Any questions?
Do you wanna be consistent with the first one where you just did the two names, like Turner Baker, do you want this to be?
And maybe just do Brown Edwards. Is Timber a name?
Is Timber a name?
That's the last name.
No, it's a company. I think Edwards, if you wanna do it Brown Edwards Road, would be consistent with what we did for number four.
Okay. Brown Edwards.
Okay, and you're seconding that? Okay. We have a motion and a second to name Service Road number three, Brown Edwards Road. Any comments? Let's vote please. Okay. We have only two proposed names for Service Road one and two. We don't have to have a public hearing.
Move that we accept them as printed.
Do we have to have a public hearing on that?
We advertise one.
Yes, if you'll open it and then if nobody wants to speak.
We'll open the public hearing for Service Road one and two, if there's anyone here, we don't have anyone signed up, but if there's anyone. And eight, that's one that's just got one also, thank you. So that's one, two, and eight. Anyone here to speak on either one of those three? Okay, if it's not, I'll declare the closed, and we will entertain a motion for these three service roads.
Madam Chair, I move that we name the three as printed, Partnership Way, White Brown Road, and Commerce Park Drive for one, two, and eight.
Okay, everyone understand? Okay, let's vote please.
Need a second?
Oh, second, thank you. I imagined we already had one. Okay, and that takes care of the road naming, thank you those of you who came tonight. Okay. Next. We have, we've done, public addresses to the board, do we have someone signed up?
Yes ma'am, we have one person, Mike Lovelace, if you'll come forward please, if you can give your name and address, and if the clerk will read our statement on public address of the board.
Yes, as with public hearings, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern, please state your name and address prior to beginning your remarks, remember that comments are to be directed to the board, not to individuals. Please keep all comments respectful, profanity or personal attacks will not be permitted, pursuant to the rules of procedure, I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker, thank you.
I'm Michael Lovelace, my address is 1246 Twisting Creek Road, and I'm here to speak on property known as 761 Maple Ridge Avenue. I have provided packets for everyone, we've created a petition that we've brought around to the residents of Maple Ridge Road, and there is much to be known about this property, and it's listed on page one of thirty-five underneath the cover page of the packet I've presented. I do not have time to go through all of this, but I would like to say this, I would like for the commissioners to read through this packet, read our petition, see the history of this property, and read what we're actually petitioning the board to do. Now, I've been told that the board has no teeth, that y'all can't really do anything, but I've seen y'all do some things here, okay? And I'd like to at least let you know that eighty-four percent of the people in this subdivision signed this petition, eighty-four percent of the households that exist in this subdivision signed, okay? This property is an accident waiting to happen. One of these days, if nothing happens here or anywhere else, we're gonna hear on the news that a child or maybe an adult has gone into this property and have been severely injured, or possibly worse. A lot of people have asked me why I am doing this. I don't wanna hear about a child dying because they entered this property for a dare, or to have fun, or whatever. I just wanna also remind the board to think about this one thing, a decade ago, the taxes on this property were three thousand dollars a year. Now, because of the state of the property, it's three hundred dollars a year. If this property was cleared and rebuilt in ten years, the county would make back more than what it would cost to clear this property out. So I would like to possibly come back after y'all have had a chance to digest the information I've provided, and see if we can discuss this, and see if there's anything that can be done, a way to move forward with this. I thank you all very much.
Okay, just a moment, we have a question, but before we do that, what I would like to say to you is that we will certainly do that, I think we've been aware of that in the past, and I think planning has been, and we've had it looked at and talked about, but no one has come forward like you have and brought this forward, but I think we'll have to have time, as you said, to read over it and digest it, and.
Yes ma'am.
Hopefully someone will, well, someone will get back.
It's in Mr. Nunley's district, and my fault, I missed a meeting with him a week ago, he said Thursday and I wrote down Friday, I don't know how that happened. But, you know.
Little happened all of a sudden.
I would entertain, you know, definitely getting together with him and see if we can figure out a way to work forward on this.
Okay. It, I think that, like I said, it has been looked at, but we will certainly take another look at it and get back with you, we have your information, is how we can get in touch with you on this packet?
No.
Okay, would you give that to our clerk at the end in the gray sweater? Thank you, wait a minute, Ms. Perkins Williams, do you have a?
I was trying to figure out where it was.
Oh, okay.
It's off of.
It's Maple Ridge subdivision.
Yeah, Eastern Pines Road, it's off of Eastern Pines Road.
It's a project called Maple Ridge.
It's just the other side of Brittany Ridge.
The, and the house is totally abandoned, he's not, he is, he is not exaggerating when he says that it's a hazard.
Oh yeah, you can, from the street, you can look at this property and see the roof is caving in. I can't imagine what it looks like on the inside, but I do know from neighbors who saw an inspector who came out that Mr. Rhodes sent out, I don't know if he's still here, he sent an inspector out, and inspector came and looked inside, went back to his truck, put on protective clothing and a rebreather mask so that he could go into the property, it was not safe for him to go in normally.
Yes, sir, well, we're not doubting that this needs to be done, and, or whatever needs to be done.
Yes ma'am.
What we're determining is whether there's anything we can do or anything we can help.
Right.
To get it done, and if you'll just leave us a contact number or a way to get in touch with you.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, is that it for public? Okay. Anyone else here that maybe didn't get to sign up for public address? Okay, well, we'll move on to items for report. James Rhodes? You are still.
Madam Chair, you and board members, you've heard a lot about the Southwest Bypass tonight, so we've got Jeff Cavanaugh's here, he's a planning engineer with Division Two. He's gonna give you all the lowdown, not only on the Southwest Bypass and its opening this week, but a number of other projects, and it's probably not all good news, but it is very good news that the Southwest Bypass is open, so I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, appreciate you letting me come for you tonight. Do want to make mention that we do have the ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday at eleven o'clock, everybody should have gotten an email. Hoping that you did, I'm sure you're all on the list. So that's eleven, be at the nine oh three overpass, so hope you can make it. So just wanted to briefly go over our, what we call our STIP, or the ten-year planning document we have for our capital projects, this is all our new stuff, this is not operation and maintenance. So this is a ten-year planning document, and recently, we've had some issues with some money projections, so some of the projects that you've probably heard about, we've probably presented to you, are gonna be slid back, their schedule at the present time has slid back some, and so we can go through those, and then I'll bring you up to speed on some future projects that are in the making as well. So a project, our STIP was approved by the board, Transportation, and in September, so it's official now. And like I said, some of the project, well, a lot of the project schedules have slid back recently, mainly due to three, three issues, one was our project scoping, two was the MAP Act, and third was disasters that we've, and costs we've incurred over the last few years especially. The project scoping issues, and I don't wanna go too far in the, in the history, but several years ago, everything changed on how we fund projects, and because of that, there was a surplus, and so we, we basically got overprogrammed, we had a lot of money in the STIP at one time, a couple of years ago, and so we were pushing projects through the, through the system. The issue was that, was that it was a new system that was designed from the legislation, and a lot of the projects were new projects and hadn't been looked at thoroughly on an engineering level. They were good ideas of projects, but they haven't had a lot of engineering eyes and design on it, so you couldn't really get a good estimate for construction, and especially for right of way. So that's one of the big issues that we've had, now that we've got some of these projects coming to construction, the money hasn't gone as far as, as we thought it was. The other thing is MAP Act, I don't know if you've been aware of that, but that was something that basically was dealing with a lot of these overpasses and, or bypasses in some of the larger cities in the state. We had been in court, and in twenty seventeen, we, the Supreme Court ruled against us, and basically said that we were getting right of way without paying for that, so now we're going back and paying back right away in damages. So that's something that has been a little bit higher cost than what we thought, and then disaster and storm recovery, since two thousand and four, from two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen, we're averaging about sixty-six million dollars a year in storm disaster recovery. In the last three years, we're, we're at two twenty-two average per year, and that doesn't count just hurricanes, but that's snowstorms and rock slides as well. That's a picture of US four twenty-one during the hurricane that hit Wilmington. So the good news is, we've, we've, we've brought forth a couple of projects, we've had open, Tenth Street Connector was open, that's a picture of that right there. Southwest Bypass, we're opening Thursday, that's, that's a project that's long in the making, and so we're happy to have that finally open. We're also working on two sixty-four, was able to get some money from interstate maintenance funds actually, to widen two sixty-four, and also get the depth of asphalt where we need to be to get it up to interstate standards, so that's what you see if you go towards Wilson, that's the project that's been ongoing out there. So those are the ones that are under construction, the deliverable projects are the ones that you've heard most about over the last few years. Those are the ones that are what we call locked in, so they're not going anywhere, we're gonna build them, it's just a scheduling type issue that we're dealing with right now. One is the Tar River Bridge, we're gonna be replacing the northbound bridge, we were gonna go to construction later this year, but that's been pushed back a year, and that will have, it's Bridge Thirty-eight, that they're near the airport. Soon we do that, we'll have to put traffic on the, on the other bridge, one lane in each direction. We've got a small project just south of that, at Fifth Street, we're gonna be adding a turn lane, that's to help with left turn movements coming down forty-three or Fifth Street. Dixon Avenue is a project that's, that's through project development and through right of ways, we're just waiting on construction funds for that one to be released. We had to push that back a couple of years, it was supposed to go to bid in February, February, March of this year, and we got, had to push it back three years. Greenville Signal System is to upgrade a lot of, or just about all the signals in Greenville, get them on fiber optic lines, that would be, benefit the city to be able to read time and, and just keep those signals upgraded to standard, over the years, you put them in, and the components are, kind of get old, and so that's a way to, to upgrade the whole system. Fourteenth Street, Fourteenth Street is, is ongoing, it's actually in the right of way phase, and, and we're able to keep working on that right now because of some bond money that was attributed to that project. So it's still in the right of way phase at this time. One of the changes with it is, we had to push the construction back, and the construction's going back to fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then if you look at the bottom, you'll see that it's also been combined with the Fire Tower Road project, that was a change that actually came out of the Fourteenth Street discussions, when we're getting ready to go to right of way, from a constructability standpoint, it made a lot of sense. If you, if, cause the Fire Tower Road and Fourteenth Street were tracking pretty close time-wise, and we didn't wanna run the risk of having two separate contractors on those projects because of the, they connect in, and so we wanted to make sure that that, that flowed as, as well as you could. So that's, like I said, that's been pushed back to fiscal year twenty twenty-four for leading to that project. And as I said, that ties into the Fire Tower, so there's Fire Tower, if you didn't realize, it was actually two projects originally. One project was from Charles up to Fourteenth Street. Then the other project is from Fourteenth Street all the way to Porter Town, and then down Porter Town, going out to Thirty-three. So all those projects could be bundled together, we're actually paused on that project right now, we're not able to do any preliminary engineering. At the present time, we're getting real close to right of way phase of that, so hopefully we can get permission, hopefully soon, to be able to get started back on that project. And that's the other piece of it, that goes out to Thirty-three, and so all three of those projects will be led at the same time. And again, construction will be leading that to contract twenty twenty-four at the present time, that could change, it could slide back up, but that's what we're going with right now. And Allen Road, we were almost through with right of way on that one, we're probably about ninety-five percent, only a few parcels remain acquiring right of way. We're, we're paused on that project as well, it's, it's scheduled for twenty twenty-four at this time as well. And also Evans and Old Tar, sound like a broken record, but it's paused, it's paused as well, and we were just at the right of way phase of starting on Evans Old Tar, and we're paused on that currently, and hoping that we can get started back on that before too much longer. Our, our construction timeline right now is twenty twenty-four on that one as well. And we came last month and, and presented on the Forty-three South project, and that was the, nothing's changed on that since we came, came last month. It's on the twenty twenty-four timeline as well, but that's, that's subject to change, depending on funding. That's a lot of information, really quick, does anybody have any, any questions on any of those?
I do, would you go back to Fourteenth Street? It says multi-lanes, but the picture only shows one lane going in each direction, plus the bikes going in each direction.
It was, when it was put in the system, it was put in by the MPO for multi-lane. And it's just, I guess we just kept that, it's, it's two lanes with a median, center median.
Two lanes going each way?
No, one lane going each way.
Then what, why would you want to spend $18 million to not upgrade it to worth it's, where it's going to do any benefit that I can see? I live on it and I, I live near there and I drive on it almost every day and I don't see how that's going to benefit. I'd rather have $18 million of my taxpayer money go somewhere else. That's my opinion.
Well, what we did, when it first was put in from the MPO, it was for a four lane divided with a median. When they did the traffic projections, the traffic projections came back and showed that in the design year, which was 2040, that a two lane would actually work as long as you put the median in to control some of the movements.
But you've got two lanes there now. Why spend $18 million to have an island in the middle? Yeah, you got a bike path on the other side, but you can have an island in the middle. I don't see any real improvement. You're, you're, you're saying that two lanes will handle it. Well, it does now. If, if you go there during rush hour, you might disagree with that. But $18 million? Again, I think it could be better spent somewhere else if that's what they're, they're going to do.
If the, the traffic projections would be, would not be where it would, it would fail if you didn't put the median because, but putting the median, you control the movements. And so the two lanes work to that. If you didn't do anything, then the two lanes is going to fail.
They don't work. I'm just saying that we're spending $18 million to go from two lanes to two lanes.
Right.
Is it safer?
Yes.
It is?
It would be, yes. Because you're, you're limiting your left turn movements.
And you're widening the, you're limit, what, what are the reasons for the safety part? I mean, name some of them.
Basically, you're limiting left turn movements. So when you're coming out of the subdivisions and side streets, you can't turn left everywhere you want to. Sometimes, some of them you have to go down and do a U-turn.
Okay. And it would reduce head-on collisions. I don't know if they've ever had one on there, not, I would assume.
Technically, it could do that, but more or less the T-bones where you get, you get the side impact. That's where you see the most safety benefit of, of putting in a median and, and controlling the turn.
So basically, it's not so much a widening as it is putting in a median.
Yes.
And it's really going to help with the safety and the number of turns.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but the problem I see also is that, where you're talking about doing a U-turn. Go, go on Fire Tower where it doesn't have a U-turn. But the queue where you're going to take lane, turn left on the Tar Road, it's not long enough. And I don't think any of these queues are going to be long enough. I don't think they're going to be long enough on Highway 43 South either. You're going to have traffic backed up into the main lane, just like you have on high, on Fire Tower, because the queue, the traffic queue's not long enough.
Hopefully not. That's, that's what the traffic engineers.
Well, hopefully not was probably what they were saying on Fire Tower too. Go there on rush hour at nighttime and see what happens.
And a lot of that's because the, you're controlled by the signal. The left turn is controlled by the signal. When you don't, when you're not controlled by the signal, the gaps come more frequently.
Anything else? Yes.
Yeah, so the indication of the bicyclers here is because of a bike bicycling lane?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about how, what deliverable or locked in means in terms of future planning that might incorporate more bicycle lanes? And I don't know if this is complete streets kind of?
It is. The, the projects that are, we say locked in, for, for years, you would hear about projects being worked on and then you kind of wouldn't hear for a while. Southwest Bypass is, is, since we've talked about it all night. When I, when I first moved here in 1991, I heard that there was a bypass coming and I'd heard it my entire career. And the, the way the system is set up now is once it gets in that first part of our STIP, then it's locked in. It doesn't go away. It's not going to be put on a shelf somewhere, you know, for five or six years and then pulled back out, worked on. It's, it's locked in and we're going to be working on it so it's not going away.
So when it's locked in, is it still possible to try to get the addition of bike lanes through complete streets or are we precluded from that, that attempt?
The, all the projects that are going in the system now, at least over the last several years that I've dealt with, it specifically have all been some type of, of complete streets where it's either sidewalks or bike lanes wherever they're feasible.
So all of these projects that we're looking at tonight have some element of bike path or pedestrian?
I'd have to go back through every one of them, but all of them have some type of, I wouldn't say amenity, but some type of pedestrian or bike or both.
So how does the county get involved in, in looking at that sort of thing in, in the, the, the roads that are in that deliverable package so that we're comfortable with what's being done with biking transportation?
Right. That's the best, the best way is through the RPO and the MPO. And y'all have representatives on that. And so that's the, that's the best way because that's where the projects start. And so the, the projects used to where the DOT would work on them and bring them to you and say, this is what we think the fix is now, that's changed where all the projects actually come to us from the RPOs and the MPOs. And, and they just, they decide what the project looks like before it, when it goes into being scored and actually comes to us. And then we can sit down and talk and say, are you sure you want this? If, you know, everything has trade-offs. And so you're constantly looking at that to say, this is what you want, this is, this is what it'll take. And if you're fine with that, that's fine.
I was, I just have become the rep for RPO today. And one of the discussions in today's meeting was about projects that are underway where bike paths are fine until they get to a bridge and there are issues that are coming up with bridge construction. And it makes me think about that, a bridge over the Tar River and if there is a thought to, to accommodate bike traffic on that bridge.
Well, when you put in a project with the bikes, it's supposed to be a part of a comprehensive bike plan. And I don't think on, on 11 has a bike path out there.
So that's something that we need to have in place before we can, can get into it. Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Good. Thank you. Any other question? Comments?
I've got a, a few more if y'all want to know about what's, that, there are projects that are not locked in that I have to go back through our scoring. And I can just show you those right quick. That's a roundabout at Worthington and County Home. That's been proposed and scored, but like I said, it's on the back half, so I have to go back through scoring again. 10th Street, safety improvement and access management with a median on that road. Evans Street, this would be the continuation of Evans Street project where it starts there around Camping World and this would take it all the way downtown Greenville. And then 33 would be a, is a widening project that would start near Simpson and go towards Grindland. Stansburg Road is by the hospital and that would be with a median as well for access management. And then access management project in Charles Boulevard down by the college. That's all I got.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Okay, next, Mr. Kroom, if you'll come forward with our tax collection report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. It's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight, I'm reporting on October 2019 tax collection report. The Pitt County Combine Collection Rate for Personal and Real Property for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 is 63.92%. For the same period, last year it was 65.83%. And we continue to use all remedies to collect all past due taxes owed to the county. My recommendation is to, for y'all to approve the report as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote, please. Get out.
Thank you. Commissioner Perkins-Williams stepped out.
Yeah. Can we move on? Brian, if you'll come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present to you the October 31st financial report for the General Fund and the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. At the end of October, we are 33.33% of the way through the fiscal year. On the General Fund side, we have brought in approximately 40.5% of anticipated revenue and we have spent 32.2% of anticipated expenses. The expenses this year, the, the gap between expenses and revenues, as you know, is running higher this year due to the acquisition of the Warren Farm property back in July. On the solid waste side, we have brought in anticipated revenues at 48.48% and we have spent at 30.42%. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We're going to?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
How much did that compare to last year's solid waste?
On the solid waste side, it's, it's actually in your report. We look at it more from the budget side. I don't have that directly here in front of me right now, but I can get that to you.
Thank you. It's a good question.
We'll shoot to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. If we'll vote, please. Can we go back and pick up Ms. Mary Perkins-Williams' vote?
I don't need to. I've just moved forward.
Okay.
And since it passed by that large majority, hers will count with the majority.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Scott Darnell, Economic Development, you'll come forward.
Well, thank you. I brought a prop with me tonight. So I told Alan we were going to name a road after him tonight to get him here, but it's something different. He's confused now.
He had a chance tonight.
No, I'm, I'm going to give a brief update, but we have a public hearing next week, excuse me, the next meeting, and it's going to be for Grover Gaming. And Alan's with Grover Gaming. He's the CFO. He has all the money. But a little bit about Grover Gaming, they started in Pitt County in 2003. They became Grover Gaming after multiple changes over the years in 2013. They employ about 100 people in Pitt County, about 125 people corporate wide, and they've decided to grow in Pitt County. So they're in the gaming industry. They make these very elaborate games for different states. So they manufacture technology as well as the different gaming components. And the average pay of these jobs are going to be $58,000 plus. So a lot of times we talk about these companies, there's thousands of them. We got a lot of good things going in Pitt County. But, you know, I asked Alan to come with me tonight. You know, this is the face behind the guy. I mean, this is the company employs 100 people. And this is the person in his company that's choosing to invest in our county, to provide for our citizens. So we can never, I think, think our existing industry's enough. Y'all are big fans of this. That's why I wanted to bring Alan here. And I want to see if we could just give him a quick round of applause for the investments they make in Pitt County. Thank you. So we'll have a public hearing. We'll go over the particulars of how many jobs and the growth coming during the public hearing. But again, I wanted Alan to come. He's from this county. He loves this county. He was born in this building, probably on the first floor, I told him. But yeah, we look forward to coming back for the public here and want to thank Alan for all their commitment on behalf of Grover Gaming. And thank you for continuing to grow in Pitt County. Thank you. Appreciate it. See you soon. A, a couple of other quick updates while I'm here is, is, you know, you've told me how important the North Carolina Department of Commerce is. You know, I thank them extensively after talking to Commissioner Huggins last week and told him we'd love to do something for you. They're a great partner and you're going to see that partnership grow during the public hearing. So we never forget that. And Commissioner Huggins, thanks for always reminding us of that. A couple of things on recruitment side, I've had developer friends in, look at our spec building, look at our Warren property, how are we more competitive with this? What's the markets doing? What are the cost of buildings in other markets? So we're going to get more strategic with that going forward. I'll give you updates as we get further along with that. Kelly just got back from a two-week trip of CPHI. It's Contract Pharma Manufacturing Conference. She joined Johnston, Wilson, and the North Carolina Biotech Center where they presented and met with the companies. And this is the first time we've done it on the Europe side. We do it on the US side. So Kelly's done a phenomenal job of getting out there and continuing to market our county. And that's what we need to do. That's what we're going to do. And Kelly's done a great job doing that. We talked about our communication strategy. It's up and running. I can share with you a monthly calendar, which I'll be doing for the month of December. We started this something called Places of Pitt. This communication system is to promote all of the county, something we need to do more of. And how do we link that with the economic development asset? So Places of Pitt started. Kyle's a part of our team from a videographer side. We're starting to use Kyle more. We're going to work that up and the strategy. So we'll be doing that. But Aiden and Griffin, it's on Facebook. We started growing Pitt on Instagram and the followers are increasing, working as they should. Every Tuesday, we feature an existing industry, we'll be going forward. And then on Thursdays, we'll do an entrepreneur of small business. So IGO is a tremendous partner. But again, this is being built to help market our towns. We're getting out there. We're seeing great things like the Mural and Griffin, the Collar Festival in Aiden. So we're going to be out there featuring things with the town. Our numbers are going to be big. So we can do this as countywide. And this is part of IGO's strategy. It's part of our commitment to better market our county. And this is going to work in our policy together. And that's up and running and going extremely well already. The last thing, we're short on time, is Scott had in his reports, but you'll hear about some about this Thriving Small Town Summit. You know, why are we doing this? If you, if you notice, I, I bring a lot of people to this community. I don't like to tell them about it over the phone. I don't like to send them emails. Why don't you come and visit us and spend time with us? You know, this is coming out of a lot of the feedback from you and people in the communities is how do we help our small towns? I don't have all the answers, but I'm finding people that are. And we're bringing them in. And instead of just spending time with me, going to a couple of towns, talking to the leadership, I think it's proper and fitting, let's get them all together in one room and let's talk about our opportunities, our challenges with the people that are solving some of these things across the Southeast and Southern markets. So this is a different type of model that a lot of communities aren't using, I think should be using, but let's learn from one another. Let's get a strategy in place and let's figure out how it will help our small towns. And we're going to do that on December 5th. And I think this is something we can continue to grow as a community of how we work together and better solve the problems. So all in all, love being here. Thank you for your continued commitment. A lot of good things are happening, but we were very interactive model. We're moving it forward quickly. And we got a lot of public and private sector partners and we'll continue to grow that throughout, you know, the process of the next fiscal year. So thank you for your commitment and look forward to coming back soon.
Thank you very much for your report.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for bringing in our guest. Okay?
Okay, next is manager's report. Got several things to report on. Next meeting dates for the month of December will be the first and third Monday of the month, December 2nd, December 16th, 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. respectively. Adam Beech, want to bring recognition to Mike Taylor for two professional positions he's held in terms of information technology. One is with a North Carolina group that goes by the acronym Nickel Jisa. He has just finished his, a term as the president of this North Carolina Local Government Information Systems Association. Again, Nickel Jisa for short. And also just finished a term as president for the MIx, which is the Metropolitan Information Exchange. We just want to thank him for his professional leadership and how it leads to.
Mike, you want to come up so we can give you a hand? Thank you for all you do out there representing Pitt County.
Also, we'd like to, to recognize where we can. Ask Deputy Mealy to come forward real quick. He was nominated and has been awarded the Environmental Officer Recognition of the Mike Stillwell Award. It's a statewide award. This is from the North Carolina Solid Waste Environmental Officer Association. Deputy Mealy, as you recall, obviously was with the sheriff's office, but he was, before he transferred to solid waste recycling, he was with the, or building security with the manager's office and has been with solid waste recycling for about less, about a half a year right now. And even, almost a year?
Closer to a year.
Okay, closer to a year. In a short period of time, is doing great things. He's taken the, his position, his program in terms of enforcement with environmental issues, littering, dumping, illegal hauling, just to mention a few. And I think.
Pardon me? All environmental.
All environmental. And has, even that short period of time has been recognized for his, his work. You had the picture on the screen. You see the award he was given. Looks like a beautiful.
Is he going to hold it up? I want to see what's in the box. Yes.
He's got the award.
Yes. Oh, right. Great. Congratulations. Thank you. We miss you up here.
Well.
I'm happy to have you in the community. I am too. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you for recognition. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Item D on the agenda, as mentioned by Scott Darnell, there is this Thriving Small Town Summit scheduled for December fifth. That's from about nine to twelve. That'll be at the Viden Administrative Building, and it does include a lunch. On item E, as part of the annual chairman appointments on the Board of County Commissioners that normally happens right after the chairman is elected in the month of December, you have chairman appointments. We've had some changes with Commissioner Coulson going on to the A B C board. We had some changes on the M P O and R P O with representation. We, there was a need for an alternate to the M P O and an alternate for the R P O. So right now, we will have Commissioner Albright as the alternate on the M P O and Commissioner McLauren as the commissioner on the R P O. In reverse order, Commissioner Albright serves as the primary person on the R P O, and Commissioner and Vice Chairman McLauren is the primary person on the M P O, if all that makes sense. So we wanted to announce that and just have that in the minutes. And obviously, once the board decides who the new chair is next month in December twenty nineteen, then that could all change, but for the time being, that takes care of those alternate positions. On item E, we just wanted to clarify and make sure it was in the minutes regarding a consent to amend and restate the Articles of Corporation and Bylaws of P C M H Incorporated. This is consistent with all the actions the board has taken to date, and I'd like to read this statement if we can enter this into the minutes. And it says, "As a result of litigation involving U N C and E C U against Viden and Pitt County concerning board governance, on October fourth, two thousand and nineteen, this board authorized the chair to sign a settlement agreement, amended affiliation agreement, and consent to revise corporate bylaws and articles to include the terms of settlement agreement." This report is just to follow up on the advice that the settlement agreement and amended affiliation agreement were signed by the chair on October eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and the chair consented to the changes to Viden's bylaws and articles to be consistent with those documents on November twelfth. The lawsuit has been dismissed, and no further action is necessary from Pitt County. So if we can enter that into the minutes, and we just have that reporting out, so we just close our chapter of this matter. I've had a couple other things not on the agenda to report on. The Health Department had a grant application for the Nurse Family Partnership that they are seeking. It's fifteen thousand dollar, one-year grant application to continue existing activities. They'll be applying for that if funded, that'd come before you in terms of a budget amendment as such. As alluded to by Jeff Cabanus with N C D O T, there is a ribbon cutting for the Greenville Southwest Bypass. That'll be this Thursday, November twenty-first, eleven a.m., and as he alluded, that will be at the interchange of nine oh three and the bypass, and you have directions in front of you of how to access the bypass to get to that site. And the N C D O T is asking for an R S V P on that, so if you'll let the clerk know if you plan to attend, we will let D O T know our head count for that.
And that's...
Eleven a.m. on Thursday the twenty-first.
Right. This Thursday.
And I had just one other item, and just wanna bring to the board's attention that there will be a portrait presentation ceremony at the Pitt County Courthouse. You previously had approved the commissioning of two portraits for two retired district court judges, for retired Judge Leach and retired Judge Hillburn. This ceremony will be Friday, November twenty-second, at three p.m. in the old historic Superior Courtroom. And with that, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. And in reference to the judges' portraits, this is something we started a while back and have continued on for retiring judges, so it really shows up nicely in the courtroom over at the courthouse, so if you can attend, that would be nice. Okay? Next, we have items for, no, where are we?
Items for consent.
The items for consent.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. A second? Let's vote, please. Brian, you're up again.
So I have a handout coming around that goes more into depth in the projects that I'm about to discuss. That way, you can see them directly in front of you, but what we wanted to present to you tonight was a proposed plan. We're looking to go out and borrow money for a set of projects. This would be our two thousand and twenty limited obligation bonds. We have talked about this somewhat in our C I P discussions over the last few years, and I think we're ready to move this forward and hopefully go to the Local Government Commission this spring with some projects. So with that being said, this will be the first LOBS package that we have looked up to go borrow since two thousand and sixteen. We're looking roughly at about twenty-one and a half million dollars. The projects will consist of Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, the reimbursement for the Warren Farm, and then a small bit for solid waste and recycling.
Brian, can you briefly discuss the difference between a LOBS and a GEO bond for the board and the public?
Sure. For a LOBS borrowing, we do not need a referendum of the voters to go out and to start the process, whereas in a GEO bond, that would require a referendum to be placed on the ballot, and the voters of Pitt County would have to direct us to move forward with the project. This is the typical vehicle that we do most of our county borrowing, especially in terms of schools and community college. It's not the best interest rate compared to a GEO bond, but it's the best you're gonna get without looking at a GEO bond. Right now, interest rates are, as you probably know, on the decline, so it's in the county's favor as we go out and approach the buying markets. In the case of these particular projects, my professional opinion is without doing the LOBS borrowing, there's probably no avenue to fund these projects. So this is the best, the best path to achieve the projects, and what you have in front of you is a project list of the projects that we're looking at from the school standpoint. The anchor for our project, for our borrowing is gonna be A.G. Cox Middle School in Winnerville. That's roughly twelve million dollars. We are looking to finish the school bus camera program and the camera upgrades for security reasons at the schools that currently don't have the cameras in place, so this would complete both of those projects for the Pitt County Schools. Pitt Community College, we're looking at the Workforce Development Technology Center. This is just the design portion of it, so the million and a half dollars would get the design part of the way, and then we'll be looking down the roads. Right now, it's looking at about fourteen and a half million to actually build the facilities there. You will hear more about that particular project in January when we have our C I P workshop. For the county, as you know, that it was your decision to purchase the Warren Farm property with the implementation of the bonds to pay us back for that three-point-eight million. And then the last project that we have discussed, this is part of our C I P process in January, and in talking with our Director of Facilities, Tim Corley and John Demery at Solid Waste, we are gonna be more proactive on one of our trash compactors on the floor that the compactor's gonna sit on, so instead of waiting for it to break, we'd like to go ahead and start the process of looking for a replacement on an existing compactor that is starting to be close to its end of life. It's working fine now, but we just don't wanna come to you in an emergency if something were to happen, and this will allow this current one to be a backup, and we'll have a new one in place. The funding for this will come from freed-up capacity on the general fund side, and then we have several revenues that we use just for school funding that we have more than enough capacity to handle the school portion of the project.
So I think the important thing here is that there is, the funds are on hand either through the quarter cent sales tax for the school projects, the Warren Farm properties through the Development Commission tax, set aside tax, and then solid waste through the enterprise fund. So in terms of debt service, all anticipated costs are accounted for. Now, if a new facility is brought on, let's say like for Pitt Community College, once they get the Workforce Technology Center up and operating through the second LOBS, they would come to us for utilities, for security, for maintenance, but those costs are normally minimal compared to the debt service of the facilities. So if the board is in favor of this, we will continue to plan and move forward. We've had detailed meetings with, multiple meetings with both Pitt County Schools, with Dr. Linker, and with Pitt Community College, with Dr. Rouse, to review their C I P needs, and these C I P projects are reflected on the capital improvement plan that you have approved and looked at through the years, and we'll be having this workshop again in January to go over the, we just started today, to go through the, all the submissions on C I P requests for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
No questions.
Before you ask that, lastly, I just wanted to point out that as part of the C I P, we've also talked about the Workforce Technology Center, the actual construction, and we've also talked about the sheriff's office's administrative building. That will be a separate LOBS that will look intendatively two thousand and twenty-two. Our capacity is for additional LOBS is in our favor as we move down the road, and we also have to work out the design and planning of that, so we're not quite ready to take that to bid, but hopefully in two years, we'll be back in front of you with that all wrapped up, ready to go.
So, yeah, again, so the second LOBS will come to you in probably two thousand and twenty-two. Again, the freed-up capacity will, with the courthouse project paying off, will pay the debt service on the sheriff's administration building, and then the second project for Pitt Community College, the debt service on that would be picked up through the capacity within the quarter cent sales tax.
So any questions?
Anybody have any more questions? Yes, Mary, we had you, and then Tom, I have you. Mary?
I'd like to know, where is this law enforcement center gonna be?
We're proposing to put it on county-owned property that would be right next to the Technology Enterprise Center on North Green Street. Is that Green Street? Thank you, okay.
Is that the technology hall?
The old Pepper Shirt Building that is now the Technology Enterprise Center, as you go further north on Green Street, right past the Technology Enterprise Center, it's part of the north of the River Office Complex. There's pine trees on there now, but we would clear that, would be in close proximity to the Detention Center.
Okay.
The sheriff is in agreement to that site, so we would not have any site acquisition costs to deal with.
What's the interest rate for a LOBS as compared to GEO, current, last time you looked? What's the difference between them?
We should be able to get under four percent.
How much?
Under four.
What's the difference between the two?
A LOBS, you could probably get, I mean, a GEO, you could probably get under three, so maybe a percent point.
I have never liked LOBS. LOBS is taking place of certificate, whatever it does, cops in the old days. I've spoken against them many times over the years. I think when I was elected the very first time, and since then, there's only been one LOB that I voted for, and the only reason I voted for it is because you were refinancing and getting a much better interest rate. So my question is, why did we wait so long to discuss this as far as financing now? And if we vote on this and we are convinced that we're gonna go the LOBS route instead of GEO, have the referendum, then for two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, why are we not pursuing GEO bonds then? I find that the old cops and LOBS, they fly in the face of the Constitution, state constitution, which basically says is that the people are supposed to be able to vote on things like this. This was a workaround that was initiated by the legislature some, many years ago, and that's all it was, was a workaround. It was an easy way. That way, the voters didn't have to be convinced to reach into their pocket and pay for it. Well, I think that what we ought to do is we ought to have a measure going forward that says that we're gonna go for the lowest interest rate, and we're gonna try to convince people it's the right thing to do. It's not that I wanna cop out as a county commissioner and not take responsibility for the vote, but again, go back to the state constitution and read it, and it's supposed to be that the people have a right to be able to see whether or not they wanna raise their taxes. That applies to the state level as well as the local and municipal levels.
If I can respond, the good news on these projects is normally you do go out for a GEO, a general obligation bond, and have the voters vote on it when there's a need to increase taxes. With all these projects, we have identified revenue streams to pay for them, and technically, with the majority of these LOBS that we've done, we did give the voters, when we asked them to vote for the local option quarter cent sales tax, which we got the majority of vote to do that. So indirectly, we have, all the school-related projects, we have gone to the voters on it, but if we did not have a revenue source for these, and we needed to come to you and say we need to raise taxes two, three cents to implement these projects, then you would, you would need to put it on a GEO bond, put it on the ballot, and get the voters to vote it up or down. But since you have the revenue stream to pay for these, if you put it on a ballot and then the voters voted no, then you'd still have the revenue available, then, so I mean, that's would be my explanation, answer.
I understand that, Scott, but I still, I still don't like the fact that we are, I think, taking the easy way out by a workaround that if you go back and you look at the history of it, was very sneakily done by the state legislature. Will we go forward with a GEO bond for two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two? I might vote for this. Is this a quick pro quote? I might vote for this if we go forward with a GEO on those other projects that have been identified. Even these projects were identified many years ago. Why are we waiting now? I know why we're waiting now, but I still don't like it.
Any other comments, questions?
It might be good just if we have the consensus of the board to move forward on this. We're missing a page in our agenda package. Initially, I don't know if we were looking for action on this or not. Can you remind me, Brian?
Well, in order for us to move forward, we've already, tomorrow, talking to the school system, we'd have to get on the schedule with the Local Government Commission, and pretty much once you get to that point, we're almost, you know, underway.
I think it would be good, or could vote on this LOBS for two thousand and twenty that you're in agreement to us pursuing these projects.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move forward on this? Okay, we have a motion to move forward, a second? And we have a second. Okay, all in favor? Let's vote, please, or not in favor? I don't know why I always say that.
I'm thinking about it.
These are projects that we've had hangings for. Okay, it passes, so move forward. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have items for decision. Randy Gentry. There you are. Welcome.
Madam Chair and Commissioners. Earlier this year, several citizens came before the board from the Makins Crossing area and requested that their fire district be reviewed since Aiden Fire Department opened up their substation out on one oh two east. At the conclusion of those requests from the citizens, the board directed the staff to proceed with the study. Staff held several meetings with the affected fire district chiefs, which was Aiden, Blackjack, and Eastern Pines, to discuss the modification of the fire service district to ensure that the citizens' request be honored while maintaining the highest level of fire service with the three chiefs agreeing. And then in your packet, you have that document where all three fire chiefs signed off and saying that they agreed to the modifications to their fire district. North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A three oh four point three provides that the Board of Commissioners may, by resolution, relocate the boundary lines between adjoining county service districts if the districts were established for substantially similar purposes. And in your packet, there are four things that were outlined in the statute that, so we can move forward for the adoption of this report, and in your packet, you have a map of the current and proposed service district, statement indicating that proposed boundary relocation meets the requirements, and a plan providing the service to the area, and what effect the changes in the amount of taxable property will have on the ability of the district to provide services or to service the debt. There's the map of the proposed district. And then this is the effect on the taxable property that it will have, and that's also in your packet. We are requesting the adoption of the report, and as required by the statute, the report will remain available for public inspection in the office of the clerk to the board for at least... at least two weeks before the date of the public hearing. And we request that the public hearing be set for December 16th.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Do we have any questions? This group has been working on this for the past year, at least.
Yes, ma'am.
Twelve months, I think.
I'd like to recognize Jay Marsh and Jordan Smith for doing a tremendous amount of work for this report.
And all the fire departments have.
The three departments have agreed, yes, ma'am.
Generally, when they do this, they do it in favor of the citizens everywhere. There's an opportunity to do that, so.
Because of the substation opening, Makin Crossing was a Class 9, and because of the substation opening and being certified, and the boundaries being adjusted, it'll be a Class 5.
Okay.
We actually had the agreement of our chiefs well into fiscal year, last year, 18, 19, but we had to wait until the budget was adopted for July 1 of the 1920 budget before we could bring it forward for you to hold the public hearing. And then budgetarily, it can't be effective until July 1 of 2021. It's gotta, it's gotta hit a, so it may seem like a slow process, but we have to go statutorily how we're permitted to proceed forward.
Okay, I'll, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. And that includes the hearing for the debt, what is it? Sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen, December 16th.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we start with our appointments. Our first one's with Elliot, and it's to the Vaden Medical Center Board of Trustees.
Yes, on the Vaden Medical Center Board of Trustees, you have an appointment needed due to the resignation of Joanne Burtendorf, who's moved outside of Pitt County. This, as you, we'll see, A, there's the letter, her resignation letter, and this appointment follows the new process for nominating folks. You have a letter in front of you from the chair of the Nominating Committee, from the Vaden Medical Center Board of Trustees. And as they've gone through the process of looking at all of the applicants on file with the, with Pitt County Government for this position, they're recommending that Dr. Waldrum be selected to fill this seat.
We have a motion for that to happen, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Let's vote. Okay, next, we have our appointments and reappointments to the Development Commission.
Next, on the appointments and reappointments to the Development Commission, you have five individuals who are currently serving on the Development Commission. You have Kim Bell, Tom Kulikowski, Patty Mills, Ernest Lee, Merrill Jones. All five are eligible for reappointment. And on October 24th, the Development Commission did take action on this, and that's in your packet. But otherwise, Chairman Ward, if you want to take these one by one?
Yes. Since this is an appointment and a reappointment, and these are not in order as far as being grouped as a group, we're gonna consider all five seats, one at a time. The, those are listed in the packet on page 141, and I will take nominations for each seat individually.
And Madam Chair, as, as a co-presenter for this item, I would like to have an opportunity as the member that sits on this commission to say a brief word, brag a little bit about the nominees, and it's exciting time.
Are you asking permission to do this, or could you move on with the vote?
Well, I am asking for permission to say a little bit about it.
Okay, if you'll make it short, please, so we can get on with the vote.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Well, I'll start with, Scott Durnell had an opportunity to brag about one of our local industries, and I'll do the same. Tom Kulikowski, the CEO of Pinco Products, was, we're lucky enough to have him join us this evening. Tom is a leader, he's up for seat five. He's a leader of Pinco Products, who's a leading manufacturer in our region. He's the only industrial CEO on the PCDC. He is at Tom's direction. Pinco was awarded our 2018 Pitt County Industry of the Year.
Chris, can I ask you this? As we get to the nominations of those people, you can speak to them if you are going to nominate them for the seat. I think that would be more appropriate.
Well, Madam Chair, then I will, then I'll make a motion to accept.
Well, let's, we're gonna start with seat four, okay? We're gonna go in the order of the seats.
Sure, I do, I do.
Okay. Well, we'll, well, we'll get to that. We're gonna start with seat four, currently held by Kim Bell. Are there nominations for this seat?
I nominate Kim Bell.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second for Kim Bell. Any other nominations?
And I would like to say a brief words.
Let's vote, please.
And then, Madam Chair, I would like to say a brief word about Kim Bell, please, before the vote, if I may.
Okay, but she's the only one nominated. Okay, now we have seat five. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Roland Smith.
Okay, Roland Smith has been nominated. Is there another nomination?
Yes, I nominate Tom Kulikowski.
Are there other nominations? Okay, we do it, we vote in reverse order, correct?
You don't have to open or close nominations, and your nominations don't require a second, you just vote in reverse order.
Okay, so our last nomination was Tom Kulikowski, so let's vote.
Madam Chair, if I may finish my brief comments about Mr. Kulikowski, and why he is to be taken as a, as a great member of our PCDC, and to continue to the great work. At Tom's direction, Pinco Products is the sole sponsor of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office Summer Camp Program, where 30 youth in our community that are at risk, that have been expelled from school, are, are sent to a summer camp on the dime of Pinco Products employees and Tom and the company. At Tom's direction, Pinco Products has pioneered a workforce release program, giving young men a second chance at employment during their time of incarceration with the North Carolina Department of Corrections. A number of those young men that have participated in that program have gone on to have full-time employment with Pinco Products, who, by the way, is a, is a manufacturer in Martin County, employs a number of individuals in northern Pitt County. Tom and five other employees also participate in a very important program in our community. They're the only corporate sponsor in our community for impact youth, who mentor at-risk youth. And so, when we're looking at what type of board membership we want in this community, we want, for the Pitt County Development Commission, feel strongly that we want people that are involved with industrial development, that are also highly engaged in their community, and that give back to their community, and are objective and smart, and are not yes people. And I think that we can all be proud of Tom's service to date, and I'll let his work speak for itself.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, let's vote. This is reverse order.
I have a question. Are we voting one for yes, two for whatever?
Two is no, correct.
One for yes, two for no. You'll vote for Mr. Kulikowski first.
Okay, so we'll vote, please, one for yes and two for no. Okay, so we need to vote now for our, this one fails, so we will vote for Roland Smith.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
Out of respect for the nominee, I ask that we maybe take a brief recess so that the commission can view some documents that are in public regarding the nominee before the commission.
I don't, is he in this, in this packet?
Yes, Roland Smith.
I think he, is he in this packet? He, we have, yes, he is in that packet, and we have his application on file, and there hasn't been any question for it, so.
Madam Chair, I'm raising the question now, and I'm asking to be authorized to distribute to the commissioners in our, in our capacity of doing due diligence for any member of the commission that's nominated, to serve on any commission that we afforded the opportunity. If there's a question about someone's fitness to serve, that we raise it, and I would like to do so in private, so as to respect the privacy of the individual at question.
Madam Chair, we just took a vote on this, and that nomination failed. I make a motion that we go forward with the other seats, please.
I object to that.
Ms. Wright, respectfully, we are.
Madam Attorney, will you help us along this?
I want to say what my objection is.
Yes, so you have a, you're in the middle of a nomination process. You have two nominations, you've afforded an opportunity for comment, and then you have ended that comment opportunity, and you have started your voting process. So you have had one candidate voted upon that was not successful, so you then move to the next candidate. So your options as chair are to move forward with your vote, or to recess if that's necessary.
Development is important.
So I would almost feel as if comments at this point mid-vote would be out of order.
That's how, that was what I was asking you. So we will move on with the vote, and then if there's anything after that, we will hear that at a later time. So we will proceed.
Personal privilege, please.
Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm bothered by the way we conduct business as it relates to our position to serve on various boards. I find it very disrespectful of people who serve on the board when you don't want to hear, and it's cut off. This is the second time that I've noted that this has happened in this, in this board. I think it's insulting that we, as a board, attend meetings of sort for various boards, and we come back and just disregard what the liaison or the person representing us on the board has to say. I think it's about time we be open. I think it's about time that we be respectful of our willing and our position to serve on these boards. When I came, I only asked for one, and I didn't get any of those now. So, but I'm still serving of all the boards that is appointed, and I think I haven't had a time, and I've been interested of development on this board ever since I've been here. And my personal privilege is that I think that people come to this board with all this knowledge that I'm not privileged to. So I want to know more about this person that's being recommended for this board. I'd like to know why we are disregarding the fact that after I interviewed and looked at all five people who was recommended to serve, and I talked with the ones that I did not know, and I asked questions, and I did my own personal interview, as I do with the rest of them. The community, this man hire, this person hires a lot of people from my district for blue collar jobs. I verified him with other industry in my district. So I think it is about time that we start paying attention to the sacrifices we give as an individual to serve on the various board, and stop cutting people off and disregarding their recommendations, and they are appointed to serve. If you don't like the way someone serve on the board, then the chair should take them from the board and put another one, because the chair, we go by the chair's appointment. And it's about time we start doing that. I had one appointed for me that's a, that's a slum landlord, and you put him on a place where it was committed, and I dis, and I was very disrespected as it relate to that, because how are you gonna plan about housing when we have someone serving on it that has no respect for the resident living in the house? It's about time we change our policies and address this issue. That's the way I feel, and this is my summary for this term.
Okay, well, I think anything to do with policy, we'll have to speak to at an opportunity time. This vote, we're going to take now on our second nominee. So if you'll vote at the present time, and the name again?
Roland Smith.
Roland Smith. Let's vote, please.
And we're voting one for yes and?
One for yes and two for no. It passes. We'll take the next nomination for seat seven.
I nominate Patty Mills.
Okay, Patty Mills. And we have a second? Let's vote, please, unless there's another nomination.
Who was nominated? Since all of the nominations are coming from?
Patty Mills. She is currently in that seat.
This board has six members in the sixth, from the sixth district.
Okay, do you have another nomination?
I'm trying to get back to this.
Patty Mills is in District 2.
All right. She's as in, she's recommended.
Patty Mills is in District 2. I would like to point that out, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no other nominations, we will.
You need to vote, Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna make sure I find some people for District 6.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I was, we were not there.
I'm gonna make sure I find some people for District 6.
Mary, will you vote, please?
I'm voting. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I pushed the wrong button, I think.
One for yes, two for no.
I got one. What did it do?
It'll tell us in just a moment.
Okay, and our next nomination is for seat 12, currently held by Ernest Lee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, let's vote, please. And our next seat is seat 14, currently held by Merrill, Merrill Jones.
Nominate Merrill Jones.
I would like to nominate Don Rhodes.
Okay, we have two nominations, Merrill Jones and Don Rhodes. Any other nominations? Okay, and we'll vote in reverse order. Don Rhodes first.
Is it the same person for the first?
One for yes and two for no.
That passes.
Okay, that, what's the count?
Six to three.
Six to three for Don Rhodes. Okay, any other comments? That takes care of it, correct? Okay, we are now at our.
Who? Close session.
Close session, we need to go into closed session. Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 318.11A 3, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. You will so move.
Okay, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. You want to vote on here? Yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll take a three-minute, five-minute break, votes, before we get started. Okay, we'll take a three-minute, five-minute break before we get started.
I welcome you back to our meeting after our closed session. And, um, did we have, do we have anything to, any minutes to?
Not this time.
Not this go around, I thought we had done it recently. Um, I will, we will do commissioners' comments. We'll start down here. Mike, Anne? You can just say no.
No.
Oh, excuse me. I, I do want to say that this morning at the ABC Board, we had, we had a good meeting. And Mike and Tom and I are all on that board. We're fully staffed now with a new director and new chief and all, so we're moving along.
You want to tell us who the new director is? I'm not sure. Everybody knows.
Adam Silver.
Okay.
Fellow commissioners would enjoy the Soil and Water breakfast on December 3rd if you have it RSDP. It's quite nice. And Soil and Water has also recently completed another, or excuse me, gotten a grant for work on some more snagging. So they're, they're staying quite busy with clearing out waters.
Okay, Mary?
I'd like to wish all of you a very feeling Thanksgiving and very safe holiday.
Okay, thank you.
Good coming.
Chris, Tom, okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, let's vote.